Thank you, Cody.
Recording in progress.
We all have a quorum with the authority of the council physically present in the room. And we no longer would have to do polling on the votes, so yay for that. No council members, no. So we will need to go back and do the votes on the minutes. So first on January 3rd, motion for approval?
Second?
Same as before. So... All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries. The minutes from the January 25th meeting. We're presenting for approval. Cody, you, I think, well Daley was, you've made the motion, do you wish to make the motion?
I think that we accept the minutes from the January 25th, 2022.
Second?
Second by Cody. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, the council has presented with reports from department heads, and without objection, department head reports are incorporated by reference into the minutes. And since we have a fuller agenda this evening, we'll skip the reports of boards and commissions. At this time, we will suspend the regular meeting at 6:11 p.m. and open the public hearing on the City of Delphi's ADA compliance plan and the Title VI implementation plan, as advertised in the comment. The drafts of these plans have been sent to council and have been available on the city's website and at the city building. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on this topic? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing at 6:12 p.m. and resume our council meeting. So I would ask the council to allow a change in the order of business or move next to consideration of the resolutions regarding the ADA and Title VI plans. Are there any objections for that? So, hearing none, we move to Resolution 2022-3, adoption of ADA compliance plan. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2022-3? Motion from Mike, is there a second from Cody? Discussion? We are required to have an ongoing transition plan. And ours, I think most of the communities receive notification from the Office of Compliance that we were not in compliance, along with many other communities. I think our compliance plan dates to 2013. So, Butler, Pyramid, and Cypher have been working with us to update our ADA compliance plan and the Title VI implementation plan. Without those documents current and ongoing, we are not eligible for some of your federal grant and state grant funds, including community process. So, we've notified the officials that our documents are, have been advertised, and the public hearing is going to be tonight and vote tonight, and so it's passed, and that is our documentation tomorrow.
It's kind of like a recurring thing?
Yes, yeah, and it's, you know, we've been working on, certainly on our ADA compliance, you know, updating GIS systems, knowledge grants and so forth, ADA grant compliance. We advertise appropriately for meetings, and so if anyone needs assistance, you know, special accommodations, websites, ADA compliance, but we need to, you know, keep that as a rolling plan, and so that is where we are with this. Thank you for your question. Any further questions?
I know I emailed you about this and requested to know whether the 13 points in here were considered as a self-evaluation or with the fact that you have the front of the document.
Dave, do you want to, can you hear the question, Dave?
Yes. Yes, Mayor, I can hear, and David Mills is also on the call. Can you hear us?
Yes, we can.
Yes, I can.
So, I'll let Dave handle that question.
Did you hear the question?
I believe so, and I'll let Dave handle it, if that's okay.
Yes, ma'am, and hello, everyone. I'm David Mills with ADA Consulting of Indiana. Thank you for letting our company help the town from remaining in compliance with the ADA. You might have slid back a little bit, but you're in good shape now. The 13 points of compliant, it does cover the self-evaluations and the aspect of understanding effective communication throughout the employee level. At all levels of your employees, you have to work through, so all the department heads have to kind of read through it and understand it, and it's multiple points to make sure we all understand, but department heads especially, and those that are in direct communication with the public, need to make sure that they read through the etiquette handbook. The etiquette handbook was the special tool that was specifically designed to cover most of those points. Now, with that being said, no, we did not go through and read all of your ordinances to find any language that did not comply with those, with those best practice measures. So, it's not a, it's not a full self-evaluation of your existing ordinances, per se, but it gives you the tools to know and understand what needs to be changed in your existing ordinances in a cost-effective manner to allow you to do it in your own way when you update those and update your own codes through your own timeline. Does that make sense?
Yes, I think so.
I do have my, it was difficult to hear. So, I'm looking at the section where it says that there will be a complete Title II self-evaluation, and that can be requested from the ADA ordinance. So, is that something that we need to have done before we pass any legislation to know?
No, it is not. So, those will happen, as I said, this has been designed so that each department can know and understand all of the technical requirements, and then from that level, inner department, each department head can then go through what they're responsible for, and understanding, you know, the multitude of some of these requirements, that could take some time. So, your police code, in other words. We've sat down, and we've tried to do this with other entities, but the manpower and the time that it took, it just was not cost-effective for us to go forward through existing policies and look through terms such as handicap, or, you know, wheel, gosh, handicap, or, gosh, is really the best thing to say, or disabled person, personal first language. So, that's really what that amounts to. And then there's, you know, there's multiple aspects of this, but yeah, each department, when we spend time with each department, we try to teach each department head what it is that, the real nuts and bolts of the plan that they have to be paying major attention to. And then as things change within their department with new projects and new work moving forward, understanding the general knowledge that they have to have, that's when most things get incorporated and changed, as we move forward in the future. It's a little different with your buildings. Your buildings are pretty easy. You can see that there's something wrong with it, so this is a problem, fix it, here's the fix for it. Your policies and procedures will be a little bit different. It's understanding the knowledge and what that means, so that when you have, you know, a public meeting, you need to, you know, get the information out there, if somebody needs an interpreter or something like that, it's understanding what has to happen and how it best fits you guys to incorporate it into your own departments.
And Dave, isn't this, this is a living document?
That's the draft.
The transition plan for ADA compliance and the implementation plan for Title VI are basically living documents now, I mean, now that we know that we need to be doing this virtually every year and reporting on progress that we've made. So, this is a point in time, and we, you know, we start implementing the procedures to make sure that we are, one, in compliance presently, and that we're not. We, you know, have a plan to correct those areas where we're deficient. Correct?
Yes, ma'am. This was originally a component of the ADA when it was originally signed into law in 1991. And in 1991, we were required to go through, as a municipality, all of our buildings and find out what's called architectural barriers. And along the way, they've since, as well as program access. And so, program access has changed. Now, we're 30 years later, we've had an update to the ADA where they've changed a few things that didn't work for the first 20 years. They've added a few things, they've added a few areas, such as playgrounds and swimming pools and even shooting ranges, believe it or not. But, and then we've also got other guidelines that are coming down. We expect to be law, and NDOT is requesting that we go ahead and use it as a best practice now, if we want to continue to use, such as the pedestrian right-of-way accessibility guidelines. That's an area that there really was no provisions for before, with areas within the right-of-way. And a really good example of that would be like a pedestrian bridge that links West Lafayette and Lafayette together. Prior to the 2010 rewrite and the pro-ag, excuse my acronyms, the, you know, the regulations for the right-of-way, there was no regulations to require a public area like that to be accessible. So, and in addition to that, there are other guidelines that are in the proposed stage that's soon to be law, which is why this document has to be living. There will be new laws coming. Right now, we've got outdoor developed area, I call it a GOTA, accessibility guidelines for outdoor developed areas, and this gives us a best practice guide, let's say, for communities that have campgrounds. I don't think Delphi has an active campground, but, you know, one of my prior clients, who I believe you guys now employ, JT Dug, used to be the town manager there, they, you know, that was a situation where the ADA has a set of guidelines that currently say this is law, but they offer as a best practice something soon to be law, and they provide provisions for things like fire rings and camping slips, or, you know, campers and tents and things like that, where, again, prior to this new set of laws, there were no regulations for these things. So, yes, the ADA transition plan, it's a very, very long, detailed process, process for four, but 13 points of compliance is what we have to hit to satisfy the federal government. It's no more, it's no less. Web compliance is a portion of this, emergency preparedness is a portion of this, you know, it covers almost every, well, it does, there's something in it for every department in the city, law enforcement, firefighters, you know, everyone. The building compliance is something that's easily, I think, understood by folks, because you can see, feel, and touch it, but understanding all of the other components, let's say, to law enforcement, you know, without training, they won't know that they can't handcuff someone that communicates with their hands. You can't handcuff that person with their hands behind their back, or...
Let's stop you there for a second, David. Does that answer, is your question answered, Dale? Okay, I think we're good on that one. Thank you. Any others questions? Discussion?
Do you want to know about titles and things like that?
No, we could, maybe you'll send that to me. This is, if it's a title in the resolution, then it's not substantive, you know, you can correct it later.
I did want to know in the third recital, you can, 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 you can,
You're catching that, Dave?
I think so, or the resolution for 2022-3.
Was it in the resolution, or was it in the document?
Yeah, the third recital, the resolution, the whereas, the recourse to Delphi throughout the city, it's in the last line of that third recital, it's Delphi, the town.
I'm sorry, but I'm looking at both, the resolution for Title VI and the resolution for ADA.
Dave, it's the third whereas in Resolution 2022-3, and in the last line, it says town rather than city.
Oh, I see it now, just the word town, it's not what Delphi just said, of this town.
And that's a photographical, which can be clarified. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Next is Resolution 2022-4, adoption of Title VI implementation plan. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2022-4?
No, you can't, can you do that for me?
Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mike, honestly. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. The next item, going back through the regular agenda, the next item under other business. Krista Watson had asked to speak to the council, I don't see her here, so we will move on to the next item, which is a report regarding traffic calming on our road. And Dave Buck is here virtually, and Aaron Lyons is here in person. Aaron, would you like to begin the process of, what has been done in the last month?
Sure.
They have not received them yet, no.
So, basically, in the last, you know, both reports, they, they recommend not to place students in front of the, student to reserve, if you're in what is considered public streets. With that said, are other options?
Can you say what, how Armory Road is classified, and the other reasons why?
Yes, so it's a major thoroughfare, so you've got people coming and going on the highway, you've got both schools, you've got school buses, you have a medical facility, ambulance runs, things of this nature. That's why those particular traffic, there are, there are, there are other things, I want to say, I can't remember, chicanes?
Chicanes, chicanes, is that, Dave, you want to correct us?
Chicanes is how I say it.
Chicanes.
There's things like chicanes, which would require homework, homework, obviously, supporting parent action, including directly, there's other items, such as mini-circles, which is kind of like a back route, that would be placed in the public issue. Again, you want to do a study, make sure you've got those in the relevant agents. So, with that being said, it really is going to boil down to what council wishes are. I did look into, in the L tabs, reported, it gives the jet rack and powder beacons at crosswalks. I didn't think those, price, but the data price beacons have come on. They're being bolt set, personally, the, or, so that we're able to, 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 to cover, you know, the, 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 the,[1755.75]
And instead of digging up stuff and rerouting stuff, why couldn't we try that first and just put some stop signs there to slow the traffic down, and actually, most people would stop.
People could use a traffic dart, like we're still, maybe, starting down town. Somebody walk out in the middle of dinner section with a stop sign, blink, you know, hold it there. And if you cross, um, then you'll have a term of stop sign.
Right, cause I, I, I didn't see.
But if there's not somebody going out there and they go, with, um, the fly sheet stop sign, they go out and stand out there and go to the street, then the kids cross, but right now you got kids crossing this all the time. Um, and that would give us more order, plus you'd have the dog care for safety for the kids, and if you're not going to remove them at all, especially with the big stop sign up there, you gotta get a vest on, just another idea. Does this, this is great, how's this different than what we've got now?
So that, that's not, so that's not rare, so what that's gonna do is, that's actually, those we saw at each end of Armory Road, where the sidewalks are, where the schools are, so then those are gonna flash thirty hours, that are dictated by the school.
So now they have the sign, which.
I don't see that determining people, like, speeding.
No, cause you got one right now, this is very, yeah, the fly sheet lights and everything, um, maybe it's a great thought, but like, you know, we've got something now that's telling them to flash it on, and people are still going through their fast. On the highway, you've got the fly sheet light, and schools, they even wanna stop sections with the light, so how does it charge that? School?
I would be in support of a stop sign, as a temporary measure to slow people down. And then, when we do go to re, redesign Armory Road, that's a further discussion, but, like, I would, I'd really expense a thousand dollars. I don't think that, maybe we'd read on the road in the future anyway. So stop signs are pretty expensive, or, sorry, stop signs are pretty cheap, and it's a pretty easy thing, we can do it pretty quickly. So, I'd be in support of that, temporary time.
And I, and I don't know that there's a way the city can contact the people, cause it seems like it's mainly back there in the, in the subdivision, those kids coming out of there, and, and I understand, you know, they're coming out of there and they wanna get to school as quickly as they can, and they're probably not going to walk down to the crosswalk area. So if we can do something to stop people, and if they know coming out, you know, Armory Road, they're gonna have to stop there. And then when they go in front of the school, they're not, they're inclined to, to go really fast, because they have to stop at the highway. And, and, you know, vice versa, coming the other way. I mean, I would like to just try something.
So, yeah, I would definitely go on, but, the one is not breaking some kind of.
I, I can, Dave, is, is there any issue that you see about putting a stop sign mid-block? With, with no cross streets or anything in it? Is there anything that I'm not saying, or?
Uh, the stop sign warrants are very specific, and they are a very legal thing to do. Um, to have them at a mid-block pedestrian crossing, um, probably will not meet warrants. I don't wanna say that it definitely won't, but I'm into ninety percent and higher that it probably won't meet warrants. You gotta remember that that stop sign's gonna be a red stop sign for traffic at two thirty on a Tuesday, is, is the same as it is at two thirty in the morning on a Wednesday, and it's unfortunate, but it's probably gonna get ignored a vast majority of the minutes in the, in a day that is, you know, out there. Um, crossing guards is a much more effective thing, I realize that costs money too, but, um, the signage that you have, the, the, the crosswalks that you have, you can add some more things to that, but to go to a regulatory sign, like a stop sign, you gotta look at both sides of the, the problem solving that you're hoping to accomplish, but also the problems that might be created, um, by doing something of that level, and I would just caution you to definitely look at a warrant study, um, for any type of mid-block pedestrian stop sign.
And so what's, what's, how does that evolve, Dave?
Um, kinda similar to the report that LTAP did, you know, either LTAP or, or BFNS could perform a warrant study, warrant analysis. Um, you're gonna need to take pedestrian counts, you're gonna need to take traffic counts, speed counts, to get some volumes, to know what this, uh, true traffic is on the street, plus also the pedestrian traffic, how many kids per day are gonna use this crosswalk per, per hour during the peak hour, and analyze that for the warrants to see if they're gonna meet it. And in my experience, there's not gonna be enough pedestrians during that time for the vehicles that'll be on the street, uh, to pose a signalized probably intersection, which is what it would first warrant, um, like a hawk signal or something like that, where the pedestrian's gonna hit a button and stop traffic. Let alone just hit a button and get a blinking light for warning traffic that a pedestrian's wanting to cross. Um, the legal statutes are there, that a pedestrian, that is at a crosswalk, whether it's a stop sign, or a yield sign, or no sign, has the legal right of way to indicate to the vehicle that wants it, that the pedestrian wants to cross. So the law's already on the pedestrian side, I know safety and speeds and vehicles is, is of everyone's concern, and that's a legitimate concern, but from a, um, putting up a stop sign and somebody getting hurt because the town took that, or the city took that action, that's something you have to protect yourself from too. And if it's not a warranted stop sign, you can be just as legal, just as legally responsible for causing something bad, um, as the intent is to prevent something bad. I actually get to do that, do the stop sign, if the kid walks through because they think, party's supposed to stop, party's stopped.
Or you get a rear end, you, 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 I don't like this, this is supposed to stop.
That's a good point, though, at two thirty in the morning, you might have to stop. Basketball games, football games, you might have, have an extra policeman at this corner, plus the stop signs to keep traffic going. Traffic, why would you do that, go up, stand right beside?
That's on the school, we, we work for it. I mean, it's not like, for, for, but what if, uh, this is a program, or, it was a different teacher, go get a car every day. There's how many teachers do a work twice a year?
Or, you know, a volunteer, or, or whatever.
That would be the most.
But it would have to be something, that would be something that the school would have to organize.
I think, I, I do see how that would be beneficial, um, and I'm looking at the fact that right now it's posted when students are present. And with our athletic facilities down over the W, that kids, you know, at night, running back and forth from the football field, and then walks down there, crosses over, just all of those kinds of things, I was trying to look at the, the big picture, and I do understand what he's saying about the legality to red, the, the stop signs. But I'm just not sure how much longer we can wait for them to actually do something.
It sounds like one of the actions, um, would be to, um, I mean, if, if crossing guards are, are, you know, um, recommended rather than changes to the road that, that are a ways off, or, um, a, you know, a stop sign that, that probably won't be warranted, then, um, you know, hosting.
Recording stopped. Recording in progress.
We, we lost our connection for a minute, so.
Okay, well, I didn't know, I didn't know that that's why it was never put in there, because.
The addition was put in, in there, because I, I think it's part of the, the long-term goal for Armory, who, who's using that sidewalk, so.
Right, because as, as the school policy is, you cannot, you have to go down, third corporation office, and cross there to go to the high school. I mean, it's actually written, with, you know, in a writing, whatever, minors could not walk just directly across the street and then walk in the grass to the high school. They would get an in-school suspension.
And Sharon, that's all part of the safe routes to schools.
But there isn't a route, that's what I'm saying, there's not a route there, out of the edition, or any of the homes that are right here on the road. So minors literally used to walk on Armory Road to get to the sidewalk, by hounding down, to turn and walk all the way back.
I seen out there in the dark in the morning, it's pretty frightening.
Which, you know, obviously, I'm, I'm, I mean, there are, there's parents that walk, the lady pushes the stroller. I mean, it's, I, I just didn't know about that.
That, that would be, uh, part of putting the crosswalk. But you gotta have, with the sidewalk, you need to get the direct sign, you gotta make sure we're getting across to a, to a safe location.
Right.